May I have your attention, please? We would like to get this meeting started. Thank you. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cable Vision Channel 118, and Verizon Files Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, June 16, 2015. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Thank you.
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Andriani.
President.
Borsili.
Here.
De Prima.
Here.
Ellis Foster.
Here.
Hopman.
Here.
Mongan.
Here.
Singh.
Here.
Weber.
Solakowski.
Here.
Quarm exists.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the pledge?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I believe Ms. Foster volunteered to read the Code of Ethics.
Refuse to surrender his or her independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Okay, I need a motion to add the addendum to the Board, accept the addendum of the agenda for 2015 on June 16.
Mongan will move.
Thank you. I need a second.
Andriani.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes.
Hold on.
Oh, roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Andriani.
Yes.
Borsili.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
The motion to adopt the addendum passes. Solakowski, can I just make a brief announcement?
Yes.
Members of the Board, anything on your, anything in yellow on your agenda was not on the agenda from the Agenda Review Meeting, and anything on, in gray or has a strike, strike through is an administrative correction. And members of the public, a schedule of all the administrative corrections to tonight's agenda is in the back of the TV studio with the agendas. Thank you, Mr. Solakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, approval of minutes. We will do that. Okay, we have our student representative here today. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion?
Second?
I'm up.
It's up to the student representative.
Hi. The senior class just finished our, what? Not yet? Okay.
Andriani. We're voting on the minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Andriani. Borsili.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes pass.
Okay. The senior class just finished a busy past couple of weeks with the Disney trip and prom, which were both wonderful experiences. We graduate next Tuesday at the PNC Bank Art Center, and project graduation will be that night at the Atlantic Club in Wall, New Jersey. It will be a fun-filled night with games and activities. A screening of the choir's performance at Carnegie Hall will be held in the OBHS auditorium at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 22. The peer program recently sent out its letters of admission to 179 incoming seniors. Janice Obieski set a school record in the 400 at the Mita Champions. Ray Rivera set a school record in the 800 as a sophomore, and the boys' 4x800 set a school GMC and Mita Champs record. Relay for Life will be this Saturday at Lombardi Field, and the entire community is encouraged to participate. Forty-one seniors signed to play college-level sports this year, and two students will be attending Ivy League schools in the fall. Catherine Sang will be attending Columbia, and Matthew Sandor will be attending Cornell. And last but not least, we elected a new student senate president, and he's in the audience this evening, Joseph Tuzano. And I just want to give a shout-out to my pre-calculus teacher, Mrs. Obdick, because she watches me each month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, and on behalf of the Board, we want to thank you for being a representative from the school for this year. You did an outstanding job, and good luck with your, in the future with your education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Solakowski, I want you to know that I take notes, and I always fish around for a pen, and I'm watching this young lady, and she has her notes on her phone. So bring your own device, as move to another level for presentations. Thank you.
Great job. Okay, now we're going to the exciting portion of the meeting tonight, the recognition portion, and we have a lot of recognition tonight. Okay, we'll start off with number one.
Move the Board of Education to recognize the efforts of the following Olbridge YMCA staff for their support of the Carl Sandberg Mentoring Program. The YMCA has graciously provided their facility, staff, and refreshments for our students to engage in positive and constructive after-school activities throughout the year.
I'm Dr. Simon, Principal of Carl Sandberg Middle School, and I'm joined this evening by one of our mentor teachers, Robin Wolfe, and two of our mentoring students who participated in our program this year, Katia Norris and Jessica Ortiz. We're here tonight to recognize two outstanding members of our community from the Olbridge YMCA, Denise Bucera, who's the branch director, and Ken Cardulo, who is the program director at the YMCA. And this year, our Cougar Mentoring Program joined forces with the YMCA to provide opportunities for our students and for our mentor staff members to go over to the YMCA. The YMCA generously donated their facilities, their staff members, refreshments, for our students to go and spend time with their mentors in participating in meaningful activities and building relationships that lasted all throughout this year. The Cougar Mentoring Program allows staff members and students to make a connection with each other and provide academic, social, and emotional support for our students as they go through the school year. So on behalf of Carl Sandberg Middle School, we'd like to present this plaque in recognition to the YMCA of Olbridge for your generous support presented by the Cougar Connect Mentoring Program, Carl Sandberg Middle School, June 16, 2015. Thank you so much. We appreciate all you do for us.
Our next recognition is move the Board of Education to recognize the following Olbridge High School students, along with their teacher, Mr. Joel Goodman, for their efforts in beautifying the entrance to Olbridge High School with plants and foliage. I think Mr. Solakowski and Ms. Andriani are going to join them at the dais. I think, I don't know if Mr. Goodman is here, but if he's not, I'm sure you guys can handle
Okay, first, I'd like to start with the middle of the list, and that is because that is Dakota DeSantis. And for those of you who have an agenda in front of you, there's a notation that he was an Eagle Scout who has initiated this project. So I'd like to start with him, if that's all right with you. Dakota, come on up. Dakota is one of mine, troop 219. I wish I could claim them all. For those of you who have heard or seen me at board meetings before, I never take the opportunity to miss talking about the accomplishments of the boys and the Girl Scouts when they get to the Gold Awards and the Eagle Awards. To be an Eagle Scout, you need to complete 300 individual requirements. They are time-restricted, they are community involvement-restricted, it's not just, "I did this, I did this, I did this." There are leadership components, there are civic components, there are community action components besides the merit badges and helping the little old ladies across the street. Dakota took it upon himself to initiate an Eagle Scout project for a beautification project over at the high school. They included gardening, landscaping beds, and benches. He and his troop were able to complete that. When that was completed, Mr. Goodman and his, I think it's the Environmental Club, if those people are here, took it upon themselves then to even complete the project even further. So it was a due project, and we'd like to thank all of you for making Olbridge just a little bit more beautiful. So thank you. Okay, I'll do my best with the rest of the names. Christina Alcassion. I'm gonna look right and left. Okay. Iman Brace. Dominic Downey. Ali Gheza. Oh, here we go. Thank you. Jason Gilbert. Alec Horvath. Haseed Hassan. Sunando, and I'll get this one, Ryan Kausik. Luke Layden. Yes, okay, well, thank you. Vignesh Menik of Fagason. Did I get that one right?
Yes.
Okay. Vignesh?
No.
No. Krishan Salazar. Abby Zidhafen. Craig Soriano. Isa Said. Patrick Tan. Tyler Wu. Thank you very much. Andrew, Andrew Young. No, all right, that's all that's in attendance tonight.
Move the Board of Education to acknowledge and accept the generous donation of $1,000 to the Southwood School as recipient of the 2015 NJFC Scholarship Award for our support of the Clean Communities Council. Ms. Foley, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sididino. My name is Karen Foley, and I'm the principal of Southwood School. I'm joined at the podium this evening by Carrie Ann Silvestri, School Counselor of Southwood, and Debbie DePue, Olbridge Township Clean Communities Coordinator. Earlier this year, Debbie nominated Southwood School for the New Jersey Food Council Scholarship Award in recognition of a school that shows an ongoing commitment to sustainability and environmental awareness. Southwood School was the only school in the state of New Jersey to receive this prestigious honor, along with a monetary award of $1,000. On behalf of the entire Southwood community, I'd like to thank you, Debbie, for your unwavering support of our service learning project, Sustainable Southwood. Debbie DePue has been an invaluable partner, who's provided us with countless opportunities and resources to help us achieve our service learning goals.
Good evening, everyone. It was my honor to nominate Southwood School for the New Jersey Food Council Scholarship. The Food Council was looking for a school in New Jersey that showed leadership, environmental awareness, and sustainability, and only took a few minutes for me to figure out that Southwood School was the one that showed all the qualities they were looking for and more. Sustainable Southwood sponsored many events during the year, some of which included a Green Fair, Carbon Footprint Project, Food and Clothing Drive. They made ornaments out of recyclable material, they collected eyeglasses for the Lions Club, they did park cleanups along with Olbridge Clean Communities, just to name a few. The $1,000 scholarship will help the school in their future endeavors. I consider Southwood School a leader in sustainability and in helping to keep Olbridge clean and green, and Mayor Henry and I thank you very much, and we look forward to working with many more of the schools.
Move the Board of Education to commend the following Carl Sandberg students for placing in the 2015 Kids' Bridge Contest, the theme of "How to Be an Upstander." The contest challenged students to design their own concept of what it means to be an upstander, and then tried to interpret that idea into an original video, public service announcement, essay, or visual art. Thank you for Ms. Panagakos for representing Carl Sandberg School.
Sorry? Anne Panagakos, Vice Principal, Carl Sandberg Middle School, and I'm very delighted to be here this morning, this evening, to thank these wonderful students for their participation, and I'm happy to say that we won in all three categories. So these students represent those of our wonderful students that have been participating in our character-ed initiative, and just show that they are gonna be an upstander and not a bystander when it comes to bullying. So I'd like to present these, there are few students that were not able to be here this evening. They are Jessica Nogera, who won third place for poster contest. Monika Chadhari, that was not also able to be here, she won honorable mention for poster. And Ridi Vias, who was one of the three students that worked on the PSA. I'd like to call up the other students that were here this, this evening. Amber Hess, third place PSA winner. Hannah Osbar, also third place PSA winner. And Isabel Peng, honorable mention for essay.
At this time, it's the honor of the Board of Education to recognize several athletic teams and their coaches, and individual students in the area of athletics. I see our Vice Principal, Ms. Sally Fazio, thank you for being here to represent.
Thank you, Mr. Sididino. It is my pleasure this evening to acknowledge the stellar year that our sports at Olbridge has had, and there's a lot to be proud of. So we're gonna start with our girls volleyball. They were the Red Division and GMC champions. I don't think anyone's here this evening. It's also the night of our, behind me, who's saying yes? Let's go, ladies. There you are. Come on up. Tonight is also our senior awards banquet. Tonight's our senior awards banquet, that's why Mr. Erickson is not here as well, so many of our athletes and coaches are there, so we'd like to give our girls volleyball a nice round of applause. Our cheerleading team is the Mega Division State Champions as well. Any cheerleaders here this evening? Okay. Boys Winter Track, wow. Red Division Champions, GMC Champions, Central Jersey Group Four Champions, Central Jersey Group Four State Relay Champions. Congratulations, gentlemen, if you'd like to come on up. Boys Spring Track, Central Jersey Group Four Champions, Mita Champions, 4x800, New Jersey State Champions, and GMC Relay Co-Champions. Good job, gentlemen, come on up. I see my lacrosse girls in the back, come on up, ladies, they are the GMC Champions, Coach Kajuski, you're hiding back there.
I'm not working.
Okay, he's working, but Coach Kajuski was also Coach of the Year for girls lacrosse, so we can give him a round of applause there as well. Our baseball team, Central Jersey Group Four Champions. Any baseball players out there right now? Thanks, Bill, come on up. And our boys golf won the GMC Sportsmanship Award, so we're very proud of our sports teams this year. Thank you, guys. Billy, Gerard, and Ray still up there. Thank you, ladies. So there are a few individual athletes that we would also like to acknowledge this evening. A few are again at the Senior Sports Award. Hazen Meawad, our Boys Winter Track, was our 800-meter state champion. He's at the awards night, but we'd like to give him a round of applause and publicly acknowledge his accomplishments. Our Boys Spring Track team, our 4x800, they were incredible. Ed Zalik has a Meawad in tonight here, Gerard Dambrosia and Ray Rivera, they were the Meaw Champion record holders, Middlesex County record, and Olbridge High School record, and 4x800 state champions. Thank you, guys. They will also be going to Nationals this weekend, so we're excited about that. Ray Rivera, Ray, take a step forward, please. He is our 800-meter state champion as a sophomore. How incredible is that? And I don't know, but I believe for the first time in Olbridge High School history, did we have a player drafted by a Major League Baseball team right out of high school. Mr. Billy Lane, he is a 37-round pick for the Texas Rangers. Gentlemen, congratulations, your accomplishments have just made us very proud at Olbridge. Thank you. Thank you so much. And last but definitely not least, a few coaches have been named GMC Coaches of the Year, so Mr. Damian Lennegro, GMC Coach of the Year for Ice Hockey. Again, Mr. Steve Kajuski, GMC Coach of the Year for girls lacrosse, congratulations, Mr. Andrew Hopman, GMC Coach of the Year for girls volleyball. Mr. Jack Campbell, GMC Coach of the Year for Boys Winter Track. And Mr. Craig Wood, Red Division Coach of the Year, Boys Tennis. Congratulations, coaches. And last but not least, I don't, many of you may have read this in the papers, but Olbridge High School Athletic Program was ranked as the best, the best sports program in Middlesex County, and ranked 33rd in New Jersey out of 662 high schools, so we're very excited about that.
All right, we're gonna move to number nine. Move the Board to recognize Nicole Allegro of Nikki Snip Salon in appreciation for outstanding generosity in hosting the first SEPTA cut-a-thon. Ms. Voss, please go to the podium.
Hi, everybody, just a few minutes. This was a great, great fundraiser for us. In February, I got a phone call, and I picked it up, and it was, somebody said to me, "I'm Nicole, I own Nikki Snip's Hair Salon, and I would like to do a cut-a-thon for SEPTA." I was like, wow, that was like amazing. So Wendy and I went, we met with Nicole and her husband, and we worked out a fundraiser cut-a-thon, picked a date, and it just ended up to be a wonderful, wonderful day. It was busy all day, people coming all day, parents coming to get haircuts for their little ones who look like they haven't had a haircut in a long time because they can't sit still, which was Nicole's goal, was to help our special needs community with the parents that didn't find a place to go to to get their kids, because they couldn't sit still. So that's basically what we did, and that day, we raised $2,000. So, thank you, Jamie. So this is the plaque we're gonna present to Nicole. SEPTA thanks you, Nikki Snip's Hair Salon, in appreciation for your outstanding generosity in hosting the first cut-a-thon benefiting the special at PTA of Olbridge, and we did it on April 25, 2015, and hopefully, we're gonna do it every year. So, thank you, Nicole. We are now best friends, and she's part of our family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Voss, and thank you, Nikki Snips. Okay, number 10. Move the Board to recognize the marching knights of Olbridge for their achievements and contributions to historical significance in the D-Day anniversary in Normandy, France. I'm gonna have Kelly Ellis Foster up there with Baldwin and Singh, and we can have Melissa Thatcher and Natalie join us at the podium, please. Ms. Keeler, if you wanna join them as well to assist. Mr. Murphy.
Hang on, I'm breaking it. Do you wanna say anything? Do you wanna, do you wanna say anything?
Sure.
Okay, okay.
Something short and sweet.
Okay, we'll switch off?
While you're figuring that out over there, Ms. Foster, may I say a few words? Thank you.
Okay. Come here. Come here. Come here. Come here.
We're going to do this together. I just want to say that these students that we took to Normandy, they represented Old Bridge High School in the highest possible way. They played in the town square of the first town, or the first, yeah, the first town that was liberated by the U.S., St. Mary's Gleece. Really amazing place. The French people really appreciated these students. They played in a 13th-century church in that city, and the parade was like no other parade that I've ever seen. I've been in a lot of parades over the years, but there were just, I mean, there's only 600 people that live in that town, and there must have been more than 1,000 people at that parade. The way that the marching, the marching knights actually were the only high school that was, that had a marching band there in that town, which was quite phenomenal. I thought originally that we were one of five, and we were actually one, the only high school marching band that represented the U.S. So, that is quite an accomplishment. So, I just, I just wanted to tell them how proud I was, or I am of them, and that they did a phenomenal job representing the town of Old Bridge and the high school. So, thank you so much.
I would like to say Natalie was the best behaved baby on a trip. She only cried, apparently, when I held her. So, it was... And if I could just take another moment, I would want to thank Mrs. Thatcher, Mr. Murphy, Miss Me, I don't think she's here, and Ms. Keeler to put together this. 106 people and parents, we had no issues, we lost no child, we, it was an amazing event. So, we would just like to nominate these fabulous musicians. Okay. So, excuse me if I don't get your last names right, because I usually just know you by your first. So, Kalen Chahalas? Kamani Gray? Go Dolphins? Go Dolphins? Daniel, I don't know if Daniel's here? No, okay. Atul is not here either, I don't think. Shelz, Eva, I'm sorry. Is Eva here? I don't think Eva's here. She's not here, okay. Matthew Soriano is not here? Jeannie Wester? Morgan? Oh, Caitlin Ellis-Foster? Matthew Fukey? Fuji? I'm sorry, Matt Fuji? Thank you. Daniel Roman? Marcus Snead? Marcus not here, okay. Teresa Yates? Teresa here? No, Teresa's not here? Okay. Caitlin Dunn? Kyle Cortland? William Torado? He's not here. Marie Willszewski? Oh, I know, I just got you, Marie. Joanne Iglesias? Jennifer Scally? Nicole Schmaltz? Catherine Tam? Now, just so you all know, the next group are from middle school. So, these are all the high schoolers. We have students from Sandberg and Salk. So, just so you know, this next round are all ninth graders? Eighth graders? That would be, that would be middle school. Yes, ninth grade would be high school.
And one seventh grader.
And one seventh grader. Nicole Tag? Taggy. Apologies. Matthew Tranchina? There he is. Justin Chung?
Before they leave, I just want to also recognize the parents, the grandparents, the family friends that went on the trip because it wouldn't have been possible without them. They were tremendous in keeping a large group of children, young adults, I should say, together in the countryside and in the city of Paris. So, thank you to all of you because you made the trip very worthwhile and possible. Can I just, before the marching band leaves, where are the Dolphins? Raise your hand if you're a Dolphin. One more salute. Give them a Dolphin salute. There you go. Thank you very much. Additionally, well, let's let... Anyone from recognition and wants to move on before we get to regular business can do so at this time.
We have one more admission of the TV studio.
Oh, you got the TV studio.
But I'll call Steve after.
Exactly, exactly. More room for him to come on.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, it looks like it quieted down a little bit. Okay, we're going to move on with recognition. We have an addendum, and I would like to move, I guess, number nine on recognition.
Yeah, but it's number 11.
Okay. Okay. Number 11. Can I get Mr. Saldi Prima to the microphone? Mr. Kudjuski, we would like to come up here also. There he comes.
No, he didn't say what it's about. Okay. Move the board to recognize the following OBHS students appreciated our hard work during Board of Education meetings. I don't know if you guys are aware, but we have high school students who do the work here during the Board of Education meetings and other district events. Allison Lopes? And Brooke Chlobowski is at the Senior Sports Athlete Dinner tonight, so she can't be here.
Thank you. And I would also like to thank, on behalf of the board and TV crew, that made it possible for all the videos that you produced this year at the agenda meeting and at the board meetings. Okay, I need a motion to move recognition one through 11.
Mongan will move.
Thank you. I need a second.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill Rollcall.
Andriani.
Yes.
Vorsili.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis-Foster.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 11 pass.
Thank you. Okay, we've gotten to the exciting portion of the meeting, the second exciting part, the superintendent's report. Do we have one tonight?
Of course, of course.
Okay.
First superintendent's report is going to be a report on the Italian abroad program with Mr. La Peruta and Ms. Anahita Keeler at this time.
Hello? Am I standing far away enough, Ms. Vos? Oh, you're right here. Yes? Perfect. Well, good evening. Or rather, I should say, buongiorno? Buonasera. So, experience is the best teacher. I get to travel in many, many different places because of my world language hat, and if you've ever heard me talk about languages and cultures, you would know that travel and experience transcend any textbook. And our vision in the World Language Department here at Old Bridge is, thanks, of course, to dedicated teachers like Signor La Peruta and to dedicated teachers like Signor La Peruta and Signorina Petrazella, who will soon be Signora, soon, she's getting married next week, is to take our students out of the classroom for them to truly taste and live the cultures of those languages that they're learning and studying. So, we've been fortunate enough to take our students to France, not only as visitors and students of the French language and culture, but of course, on the heels of this amazing honor to Normandy that our band students just accomplished. And so, our World Language Department boasts several different types of trips. The first one was our German exchange student trip, which now is in its second year, and this year, we are proud enough to say that we had our first year to the Italian study abroad program. But I don't want to be the one to tell you about it. I don't want to stand here and talk about the program because truly, the students are the true beneficiaries of what something like this can accomplish, and they will speak from their hearts to tell you that, for some of them, it may be a once-in-a-lifetime experience; for some of them, it may just be another time that they're visiting a country, but it makes a real difference in their lives. So, I'm going to pass this along to Signora and, excuse me, Signorina and Signor, and to the lovely students here who are going to tell you a little bit about their trip that they just took in April. Thank you.
Good evening. As many of you know, we went to Genoa, Italy. The students studied at an Italian institute, and they studied two hours a day for two weeks. We also traveled to cities like Firenze, Florence, we went to Cinque Terre, Camoli, the Italian Riviera, and the kids got to see all of what Italy is about. They got to talk to the Italians. They were able to converse in Italian, they explored cities, and in our opinion, they learned a great deal in two weeks, much more than they learn in years here. They were able to use their language, and that's what we wanted them to do. I can't tell you how many times someone came up to us in Italian and said, "Are those Italian students?" And we said, "No, they're American students." They said, "Oh, we wish they were Italian students," how well they were behaved. They were absolutely outstanding. The director of the institute was so impressed that she's incorporating high school student programs into her curriculum from now on because of these students. They were absolutely an ideal example of what American high school students are all about. We've prepared for you a little PowerPoint, just basic pictures to show you of our trip and experiences. Mrs. Petrazella would like to say a few words, but we also thought that the kids would share their experience with you because they are the ones who actually benefited from everything, and we wanted you to hear what their thoughts and feelings were. So, Mrs. Petrazella?
First off, I'd like to thank the board and Mrs. Anahita Keeler for providing us with this opportunity to take this extremely amazing educational and truly unforgettable experience for both us as educators and these students who, when we were leaving, were saying, "Please forget us here, we don't want to leave," and all they talk about is when they can go back again, and that alone was just, made it all worth it. The amount of fun that they had and what they learned and the experience that we provided them outside of the classroom, that real-life experience, just made it the best it could possibly be. And again, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. We would have not been able to do it without your help. I'm going to pass it to the students because I think they can speak to it the best.
You're not going to speak in Italian, are you? Okay, just checking.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alyssa Davis, and I'm a junior here, and most of us here are juniors, and we have Natalie Crossen who's also a senior, and we are all so grateful for the opportunity that we had. It was the best two weeks of my life, and I'm sure most of the people that went to feel the same as I do. It was an experience where I didn't really know what I was getting myself into, and it was better than I could have imagined. I learned so much, and I've always known that I wanted to go to Italy, and I'm just so glad I was able to experience the culture, because there's only so much you could learn in school, but really seeing it in, like, the culture and how to interact with other people in another country, it's something that I'm just very happy I was able to experience.
Hi, I'm Katie Mizella, and I am truly grateful to be able to say that I went on this trip. I honestly thought that I would never be able to get to Italy until maybe like my late 50s or something like that. And me going on this trip, I was so nervous, but when I got there, I just, it was breathtaking. Being in a different country is honestly one of the greatest experiences someone could go through. Like, there's another world out there that, sometimes you're like in New Jersey and you, you know, that's all you've ever seen, but going to another country and interacting with other people, that's honestly a great experience, and I hope that this program stays, and you can't take it away.
Hi, I'm Natalie Crossen, I'm a senior here for like another week. And as Alyssa said, like, there's only so much that you can learn inside a classroom. You can hear your teacher speaking, and you get used to the way they're speaking, and you can, they help you out along the way, and you listen to your fellow classmates try to speak Italian, and you try to speak Italian, and it's not really the best, but when you go to another country, you're able to fully immerse yourself, and that was the whole purpose of this trip, to have a full cultural immersion in Italy, and to be able to see the things Italian people see, to be able to walk the streets that Italian people walk, it made us feel kind of like we were one of them, even though we were so completely different. We were very much so the same. And we also got a chance to, I don't think anyone mentioned this, we got a chance to go to an Italian high school, and we were able to speak and interact with actual Italian students that were our age, and the similarities we had, like despite the language barrier, because they were trying to speak English and we were trying to speak Italian, no one actually spoke the same language at any point, it was really interesting to see, even though we're miles and oceans apart, that we're also so similar, but it was really, truly, like Alyssa said, just a life-changing experience. I know that, I never thought that in my 17 years of living, I would be able to go to Italy. I thought, like Katie said, I would be way older than I am now, and it's truly, I have so much gratitude for Mr. La Peruta and Ms. Petrazella, who I just met on the trip, and like, I love her now, and I'm crashing her wedding, love her. So, yeah, I just want to say thank you to everyone that made this possible, because it really, truly was a life-changing experience.
Hi, my name is Hannah Wonder, and I think that the best thing that I got out of this trip was that, when I was there in Italy, trying to go through the streets, even like on our own, like trying to order lunch or like buy something from a store, like those little interactions that you have with people where you need to use like everyday language that you would use every day if you lived there, it really helped me get so much more of an understanding of the language and the way that they use like all the different things that I've been learning in the classroom, like the tenses and verbs and everything like that, like just to use it in the correct way and have to use it in the correct way because or else they won't understand you. That made me, like when I came home, I was, I felt like I had so much better of an understanding of the language and how to speak it, and I felt like going to this trip, I actually learned how to speak Italian more than I did in the four years that I learned in class before that, and I think that was the best thing that I got out of it.
Hi, my name is Priyanka. I'm a junior here at Old Bridge, and going to Italy, I went with two of my best friends, but coming back, I came back with 20 of my best friends. And I think it was like a beautiful experience that you really, yeah, I can go to Italy some other time, but really going and experiencing the culture that I've grown to love with the past four years of classes I've taken, I think that's something that I really, I really can't do any other time, and I'm really, really thankful for this experience.
Hi, I'm Mel Karen. I'm a junior here, and throughout the years, Mr. La Peruta and Ms. Petrazella, they would tell me, "Oh, in Italy, the Italians do this and they do that," and it would be interesting to know like how different they were from us, but after going and like, after going and experiencing those things and those differences, I was able to appreciate all like the little things they did, because we, as I believe Natalie said, like, we're not that much different from them, and I didn't think I'd be able to go to Italy either, like as a junior in high school. So, as soon as I was, as soon as I received the letter of interest, I, my mother gasped when she saw the letter, and I'm sure a lot of moms are like that too, moms and dads, and there's, it's an experience that can't be replicated. There's nothing like going to Italy, and it's just one of the greatest experiences of my life. I wouldn't trade it for anything else in the world.
Okay, greetings, everyone. This is always one of the two very exciting reports that I, by law, have to do every year. This is the Violence, Vandalism, and HIB Reporting Report. Has to be done in two segments. I'll read through the law, which is required as well. Every year, superintendents are required to report to the Board of Education on the incidents of violence, vandalism that have occurred in the district through the previous school year. With the range of public law from 2010, 122, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, incidents of HIB, as well as violence and vandalism must be reported twice a year. Period one consists of the data from September 1st through December 31st of the school year, and period two consists of the data from January 1st through June 30th of the same year. Both reports require monthly collection and input of data in the state's reporting system. One thing I do a little differently is I do include, in period one, I include July through December, because we do have many programs in the district that run over the summer, and violence and vandalism and HIB could happen at those times as well. The Electronic Violence and Vandalism Reporting System requires the collection of data in the following areas: counts of incidents and the reporting categories of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, results of vandalism, where the police are notified, the police are notified but no complaint is filed, where there's in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, expulsions, unilateral removals, and removal by administrative law judge. Offenders and victims also have to be listed. They can be student offenders, student victims, school personnel victims, student victims of criminal offenses. Programs must be provided for disciplinary action, and that includes assignments or instruction or support services in district programs, home assignment, home instruction, and out-of-district programs. We'll get right into the report now. In Section A, it's a count of incidents by reporting category. What you'll see is in the blue, the light blue, is from the previous year, to give the Board of Education and the public a view of whether they're going up or down. So, incidents of violence, there were 16 this year, that's down one from the previous year. And vandalism, three, up one from the previous year. Two weapons, four substance abuse, and overall, in the whole area, there's 33 unduplicated incidences of violence and/or vandalism. You'll note that's a 20% reduction from the previous school year, same reporting time of July 1st to December 1st. The cost of the vandalism to the district was reported as zero. It's usually just something that has to be cleaned up or painted over. Section C is actions that have been taken. Police notification with no complaint, four. Police notified with a complaint filed, zero. In-school suspension, 13. Now, that's not in-school suspension for the entire district, it's in-school suspension for violence, vandalism reports. Out-of-school suspension, 30, and expulsions or unilateral removals, zero. If there's dashes across, it's the same as the previous year. Section D is the labels of offenders and the victims. There were 36 student offenders, down from nine from the previous year, and 19 student victims, down two from the previous year. School personnel is two, down two from the previous year, and student victims of violent criminal offense remained zero. Programs provided: assignments to educational programs, instruction and/or support services, 16 times that happened, down 19 from the previous year, and in-district programs, zero. Home assignment or home instruction, 12 incidences, down 13 from the previous year, and out-of-district programs, zero. Now, we'll move into the HIB or bullying portion of the report. Number of founded HIB complaints. This is not HIB complaints as total, these are only ones that were founded, and during that period, there were eight, a reduction of four from the previous year, or 33% from 2013. All were reported within the 10-day time period, and the Board of Education rendered a decision on all eight of them. The nature of the HIB incidents was one of race, that's down from two from the previous year, one of color, up one, zero religion, zero ancestry, zero gender, one sexual orientation, two gender identity and/or expression, I mean, sorry, zero, down from one, two for mental, physical, or sensory disability, that's up one, and other distinguishing characteristics, three, for a reduction of three. Mode of HIB incidents is, one was a gesture, you can imagine what that was. Written was the same, four verbal, physical, zero down two, and electronic communication remained at four. Disciplinary action taken, there was other or none five times, zero expulsions, three in-school suspensions, four out-of-school suspensions, zero unilateral removals from an ALJ, and two detentions, and two suspensions of privileges. This concludes the superintendent's report on HIB violence and vandalism for the reporting section of 2014, reporting period one. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sedino. Okay, progress toward goals? I guess we don't have any, right? Mr. Mayor, nothing? Reports. Do we have any committee reports?
Mr. Silikowski.
Yes.
I had my committee meeting like two months ago, and we've never really had a chance to discuss it, so that's going to have to be an ongoing process, I guess, but one thing that did come out of the athletics, food service, and medical services committee meeting was, there's going to be a checklist going forward in the concession stand for anybody, any entity that uses it, they have to check off, like you see a lot of times in department stores or whatever, in a restroom, who did what and when they did it, and so we know who's responsible for leaving it the way they found it. But there are other issues that we'll have to pursue going forward from my meeting, just timing wasn't good.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima. Any other committee reports? No? Haring of residents on agenda items only. Haring of residents, okay. I see a couple of hands, one at a time, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Education, all the wonderful teachers and staff who are here tonight, and of course, the public. I want to discuss briefly curriculum, item number seven, which is on the agenda this evening, and it has to do with character education. And as we all know, we have a lot of educators in this room, and many of us understand the importance of character education and what it has meant to this district, and I believe that it's a worthwhile endeavor. It has paid vast dividends, and we are getting children and young adults with extreme positive character, which is refreshing. And as you can see through Superintendent Sedino's report, that our HIB numbers have declined, and a lot of our programs are excelling based upon having students of character. An individual with character is going to be a better student because they understand what's right and wrong, and they have a tendency of applying themselves and becoming better educated students. So, with that said, I want to make an appeal to the Board of Education. I know I spoke about this at the agenda session. I understand that initially it was voted down. I understand that the administration has made some revisions to their request concerning
concerning the attendees to the Atlanta Character Education Forum, and I believe that it's a worthwhile endeavor, and I believe the individuals who played a pivotal and positive role in our children's character ed should be in attendance. They should all enjoy the accolades and all the wonderful positives that come out of a program of that nature, that they all worked hard to do. So with that said, I'm going to ask the nine board members here this evening to endorse the administration's request. I think it's fair, and I think it's necessary for the wonderful principals, the counselors, and the teachers, all the teachers basically participated because it's a school-wide program, and they all should relish in the celebration and to learn from their peers to make sure this program is viable and positive moving forward in the future. So again, I'm appealing to all nine, I'd like to see a unanimous vote tonight of the nine board members approving the six principals, the three teachers, and our administrators to attend the conference in Atlanta. I have a second, or there's two more items that I want to briefly mention, and it's on the agenda, it's also under certificated personnel, items 18 and 19. Tonight, the Board of Education will be ratifying or approving the employment of two wonderful professionals in this district. I've had the pleasure to work with both of them very closely, and their lasting imprint has been pressed into a fabric here in Old Bridge. That's number one, Dr. Hoka, and number two is Joe Mara, who is the business administrator. I think that they've brought a new perspective to our district, and we are excelling based upon their interaction and their knowledge and abilities, and I'm going to ask again the Board of Education to ratify or approve both of these wonderful outstanding employees so that we can continue in the future with these wonderful programs. I want to thank everyone this evening, and I'm hoping the Board makes the right decision this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Just on two of the points that you brought up, there is a correction on curriculum item number one. It is six principals, three staff members, and in under personnel, certified personnel number 18, it was administratively removed by my office. We are still waiting for the county superintendent to review the contract, she had some questions, but when they were applied to, she was on a plane, and she couldn't get back to us in time for tonight's meeting, so we're looking for her to make the necessary approvals, and we will have a cleanup meeting in the end of June for more action.
And that'll be on June 30th if you want to attend. Yes, any more, yes.
Hi, my name is Jill Calley, and I am here with several other PTA presidents and other PTA representatives here tonight to support the agenda item that relates to the schools and the District of Character awards. We as a district are extremely proud of these awards, and we are here to support a board decision to send the requested representatives to Atlanta to receive these awards. To do otherwise would be a disservice to the organization that bestowed these awards upon the district and our individual schools, and a disservice to our central administrative team, the school administrators, and the staff who worked hard and continue to work so diligently to make our schools and our district a place we can finally all be proud of. So on behalf of the presidents here, I urge you to show these awards the respect they deserve and move the agenda item to allow representation at the award ceremony in Atlanta. Thank you.
Anyone else? Haring of residents on agenda items only? No, thank you. Okay, policy, we have nothing under policy. Curriculum, one through seven, I believe, because we have five, six, and seven, which is on the addendum. Question to move curriculum.
I'll move it.
Thank you, I need a second.
Hot memo, second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Separate item one for voting and discussion.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sulikowski, I'd just like to say one thing, please.
Yes.
As per what Mr. Dunn and Mrs. Calley alluded to with number one, yes, there was some discussion last week at the agenda meeting, and central administration has amended their request, so I'm okay with what's on there now, so I can't speak for everybody else, but I'm good.
Anyone else, discussion?
I have some questions. When I read a lot of the literature online from the organization that runs the program, there was some discussion about there are lesson plans involved, and I'd like to get an idea of, at the elementary level, for example, typically over the course of a year, what kind of lesson plans are there, and how much time does it take to deliver those lesson plans?
I couldn't hear what your question was.
I'll try it again, I'm in the dead zone here on the microphone. There are, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Oh my God. How about now? Okay, good. I spent considerable time on the website for the provider, and again, character education's a very positive thing, but I had some questions, and I got as much as I could off it. They allude to lesson plans being part of the program, and in one place I saw it was six lessons of the total of 50 hours, 300 minutes, thereabouts, and the question is, how does that get fit in our normal curriculum, and what do we not do during that 300 minutes while we're doing these?
So that's a very interesting question, and I think that many of our staff would be able to answer that very easily. I think when we started out, the idea was that we were teaching character ed lessons, and what we've ended up with is the character ed concepts, the values that we are trying to instill in our students and that our staff are modeling are embedded throughout everything that we do. I don't think we can equate it to a number of minutes or an amount of time that is specifically outlined in a lesson plan. I think that the values and the concepts are taught throughout the day, in every aspect of the day, and they're included in our professional development, they're on almost every agenda that you look at, they're in every conversation that's taking place, and that's what has made this a sustainable movement, rather than just teaching character ed. I don't know if I answered your question, I mean, there are specific lessons, and that can be taught, but this is much more than a specific lesson.
There are also obviously two levels of distinction, a state level and the national level, and the state level is a three-year program, the other is five. I didn't spend a lot of time looking at it, but I was not successful in finding districts or schools who had been awarded either one or the other continuing with a second award. I mean, how does the renewal process work, or what happens, what's the next step?
So right now, there are states that have their own organizations, New Jersey is one of them, and that's the NJASECD. So our part of our application process is to actually apply using the character.org application, but it's reviewed at the state level through the state agency. Once you receive the state recognition, your application, depending on what level you're at, is forwarded to character.org where you are reviewed for the national recognition, that's why it's a two-step process, and some of our schools achieved the state recognition this year, some moved on and received national, some did not. If you receive state recognition, next year you can reapply if you haven't made it to the national level, and instead of going through the state process again, you automatically go to the national and are reviewed at that level, assuming that you've made changes based on the feedback, which is quite extensive that you receive. For the application process, after your five years are up, once you receive the national recognition, you must go through the entire application again, and you have to show how you've sustained the initiatives and improved upon, and continue to evaluate your status based on the 11 principles from character.org.
Also...
Just, we do have one school that has to reapply next year, that's Shepherd School, they were the first school, and they're ready to.
That as well. In their literature, they also state that the program essentially will help in improving test scores. Since Shepherd was the first school in 2010, five years later, has that been the case? Do we know for sure?
Well, one of the issues with that is we have different assessments that are used to compare the data, but what we did use this year and looked at as far as the student growth is where our students are compared to where they were several years ago. We've shown that our SAT scores are the highest they've been in Old Bridge history. We look at our individual, the remaining, the data, I'm sorry, the assessment data that we've provided in the district application makes it clear that we're looking at our end product, our high school students, and the growth that they're making compared to years before based on having the initiatives in place.
I'm going to assume that nobody who was in the Shepherd in 2010 has taken a recent I'm going to assume that somebody who was in the 2010 at Shepherd School in the fifth grade would not be taking an SAT at this point.
No, but another component there is that, and we'd have to go back now when Shepherd reapplies, is that we looked at our Shepherd students as they were progressing, and how they were doing at the middle school level, what they were, what their level of involvement in extracurricular activities, how does that make them a well-rounded student. So a specific test score, I don't have that for you off the top of my head, but I can tell you that part of the assessment data that is compiled in the application is looking at the whole student and how they're performing overall.
All right, and you know we can't not talk about numbers. There are approximately 130,000 schools in this country, either public schools at the three levels, or private schools, parochial and private schools, and 10% of that would be 13,000, 1% of that would be 1,300, and 1/10 of 1% would be 130. In the last five years, this program has averaged about 180 applications in total each year, with about, close to 60% of them being proved are 103. So it's less than 2/10 of a percent. And my question is, for a program that's been in place since 1998, are they doing a bad job of promoting, or is, are we not getting a level of participation by the rest of the country that would seem to be commensurate with what's being said tonight?
I caught bits and pieces of that, but from what I gathered, and my response would be that I think that the program is gaining momentum now, and people are beginning to recognize more and more of the value of the culture and climate in the school and how it impacts the students.
Well, no, I don't doubt the value of character education, but what I am looking at, trying to be from an analytical standpoint, is saying that it is not gaining momentum in the last five years, it's picking up very slightly, and my bewilderment is, given how strongly it seems to be supported, it doesn't seem to be supported around the country that
One of the things that I do look at is the districts that have applied and didn't make it. And I like to think that if it was a walk in the park, that districts that did apply and only received honorable mention for all their schools this year, such as Rumsen, Upper Saddle River, and Livingston, would have easily made the mark if they were looking to just add schools, districts, to their crest and say, well, these are additional schools, because those are obviously what they would call, you know, from a socioeconomic factor group, the highest in the state, and so it shows that you can't buy character education programs, and you can't use opportunity in life to ensure that you get them. So I understand what you're saying, New Jersey is the largest growing population, I think the other is...
Missouri.
Missouri for it, and that is why, you know, we met with the Department of Education, Susan March, the other day, and her goal, she is the Assistant Commissioner of Education for Special Services, is to incorporate what we've done in Old Bridge as part of the career and college readiness standards, and have that modeled across the state of New Jersey, because the connection between character education and career readiness is something that they're really seeing, and something that cannot be connected to a test score.
And I just want to confirm the numbers that you, that you mentioned previously, because originally, the original agenda had it that there was going to be a total of 14 people, and now that number has been reduced. And so that's still going to put the district at a cost of probably around $12,000, whether it's out of administratively paid or not, it's still district money either way. And there's probably another $6,000 to $7,000 of salaries that would be paid to people who would not be going, which is not going to go into the classroom or central administration that particular day, plus the substitute you have to replace, plus the 11 or 13 classes that will have a substitute teacher for the day when the principals are replaced and the teachers are replaced in those classrooms. So in all, the total impact dollar-wise is well over $20,000, and given the uncertainties of what happens, I'm not opposed to sending people, I'm just opposed to this amount. And I'm thinking a single administrator possibly with three staff members, and then you get the freebie, the fifth person then doesn't have to pay at least the enrollment fee, would be something to go and come back with turnkey information. This conference also runs for three days. We're going down, as I understand it, on Thursday, so Thursday night, so you're going to miss the Thursday, and I don't know what the return plans are, but it looks like there's lodging for two days, so I don't know how much of that three days everyone is going to get, so, I mean, my personal preference would be to see a lower number, certainly go, and have a group go next year, a comparable-sized group, something like that, so that's just a personal opinion, and given the way this is at this point...
I'd like to just speak to that.
Can I clarify the conference? Because the conference is actually two days, it does say the three days on there, but the first day is for people who work for character.org and are doing additional, have additional responsibilities, it's not for the guests who are there for the professional development. The actual workshops are on the Friday and Saturday that they would be in attendance.
And just to the point of like the commitment to the program in which we started in 2010, and, you know, it seems as though, you know, part of the conversation, you bring up the number of people, is we are a victim of being too successful, that we have seven schools at once. Last year, the Board of Education voted unanimously to send two people from each school and a central administration person, and that was a total of seven people for the same conference. And historically, it's been two or three people every year from each school, going back, and now they each voted unanimously by the Board of Education. It was never called into question until we had seven schools that were successful in the application process. So, you know, we want to achieve beyond mediocrity, we strive to do it, and when it happens, we'd hope that the same support that was there previous years continues, no matter how successful we are. You know, for schools that have worked hard to get this recognition, they're there, part of it is to get the recognition, to get the banner, to get the, you know, to have them go the next year when not being recognized, it's good, they'll still get the professional development, but missing the mark on the purpose of it, and having, you know, an auditorium full of people saying, well, here is the principal from, you know, Memorial School, but he couldn't be here, he might be here next year, doesn't really send the same message to why we did it and how important it is, especially as we look at, you know, our numbers, and the HIB numbers and the EVRS numbers are declining, you know, over the past three years. That is something that you can't equate to a price. We have spent money in this district on HIB lawsuits in excess of $60,000 to settle with insurance... in excess of $60,000 to settle with insurance companies. When you go to, when you go to court to fight these, the one thing they want to know is, are you doing anything to ensure that bullying is not permeating through your school? Well, it's great amount of evidence to have a national recognition star hanging above the door of the school saying, we are a school of character, and while we'd like to think we are doing something, in fact, we're nationally recognized for doing something, and, you know, having the State Department of Education defend that as well, I think provides us more of a silver bullet in case that happens again. And the goal is that it's more preventive, so it doesn't happen again.
Is it not also a part of the HIB phenomena that the, as we've gotten a number of years into the system, that there's been a leveling of claims coming in, not just potentially because of this program, because I don't know if there's empirical evidence that you have that you can show us that that's the case, as opposed to it may be a trend that's happening across the state? And that would be interesting to find out, and I'm sure I can find it.
And the first thing I quote is that the EVRS, which has been around much longer than the HIB reporting, and we're seeing a downward trend in that as well, are high as a district, as far as I can record it, is for a time period of 180 incidents across the district. Last year, we were at 75.
May I, Mr. Sulikowski?
Yes.
Okay. And continuing with the discussion with this, after listening to Mrs. Calley and Mr. Dunn, I think that there's a perception out there that the board was against sending people to the conference, and that is certainly not the case. So I wanted to make sure that that was corrected right now. That was not the issue at all. It came up as an action item without us having the opportunity to vet it, so it came up for a vote as opposed to for a discussion. And the only way that we could move forward to find some way in which we could send representatives to that conference was to either table it, which stops us from having a discussion, or to vote on it. So it wasn't administratively removed, and we needed to vote on it with the understanding that it would come back in a revamped form, and that's what it did. And I need to say that I was one of the ones that, we all voted no, every one of us, because of the way it had, it had shown up on the agenda. But there's a price that comes with recognition. There's a price that comes with fame. Sometimes it's financial, sometimes it is not. But you now get held up as a spokesperson, as a reflective model of whatever that organization might be. So you get invited to more dances. So the more recognition that's out there, and the more that people hear about some of the great things that we're doing here, the more newspaper people call up, or the more people that show up. We're going to wind up with visitors from all over the country. I've seen it happen in the district that I worked at. We've had, we had, we had people from Ireland and people from New Zealand, how are you doing this? How are you doing this? And they're looking for information so that they could take it back and then use, use us. And we're going to be held up as a role model. We can't ignore that fact. So, and the way I feel is that at 17 people, I thought that was, and again, the administration had their reasons for wanting to have 17 people go. The board asked if they would call it back a little bit, and they did, and there are now representatives from each school, and the number is down to 12. And I certainly want to see us represented and, and, you know, bring back whatever Stanley Cup trophy, however it comes back, whatever awards. I'd also like to see something happen in school, whether we have a festival or we have a day of recognition for all of those, and do something here so that we can all celebrate the success, as opposed to just saying, oh, they went to Atlanta. So we need to bring, we need to turn that key and turn, turn that, turnkey that internally as well. So I'm voting yes for it today, because it is a scaled-back number of personnel, and I'm glad to see that, that that has happened.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Thank you, Ms. Adriani. We have Mr. Borcelli.
Mr. Sulikowski, can I just add to that?
Mr. Borcelli.
Yeah. So I just wanted to add to that a little bit. Mrs. Adriani is exactly right. I know that the word was around town that the board was completely against sending anybody for, down to Atlanta for this Character.org conference, and that was completely not true. Exactly what she stated was the fact that it was presented to us for an item to vote upon without discussion at last week's agenda session, and it was, the number of participants was much greater. And the board felt unanimously that we had decided to ask the administration to go back and reevaluate really what was necessary as far as sending people down there and being able to still be able to get the information and bring it back. And that's exactly what they did, and they were able to cut those numbers down. It was at no point did we ever state or even discuss not sending anybody down there.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this one?
Yes, I would also like to express the fact that I agree with both Donna and Kevin, and I did have a brief conversation with Mr. Sedidino, and I'm very glad that you did explain to the public, okay, the reason behind why everybody would be going to this conference, okay? Because all the public heard was the amount of money. Nobody understood what the conference was about. I received phone calls that people were asking me why we were paying for people to go on vacation, okay? Because they didn't understand, all right? And when the board was first approached with this, we really didn't basically understand either, forgetting that we had voted last year and the year before for the employees to go, okay? I think it's very important for them to be at this conference, because they have showed us, in bringing these schools to, of national character education, that they are doing their job. The conferences do help them, okay? And Olbridge benefits by it, because when the people see this, this is one of the things that people look at when they're going to buy homes, is how the school system is, okay? And certainly, we have come a very, very long way. And so I will certainly be voting for it also. We just needed extra information that we did not have last week, okay? And that's why I'm very glad Mr. Sedidino did explain, so that the public is aware that it isn't just a vacation. It's to go to a conference, and the people that were involved in getting our schools where they are certainly should be there. And hopefully, next year, we'll have 17 schools that will be like that. So I will be voting yes on it, and I thank you, Mr. Sedidino, for explaining to the public exactly what this is all about.
Anyone else from the board?
If I can, just really quick. So I was not at the agenda meeting last week, but I did speak to many of my colleagues on this, and do appreciate the administration coming back. But I think the reason these are so important is, going to these conferences, that is why I think you will be on the cover of Parade Magazine. It gives us the exposure. It gives our administrators and teachers the ability to talk to other people around the country about our school. It gives us that much more notoriety that we bring back. I think having somebody from the school is important, because they can bring it back to their school, where we know it's a community, and they can, everybody can get excited. I love Mrs. Adriani's idea about doing something here. I mean, we'll probably have to wait to the beginning of the year, but I'm sure our administration will, will do that. So I think this is certainly worthwhile, the cost, as, as we said, there is, there's a cost with fame. But it's clear, not only in the data, but already, three things mentioned today about character education. The students in Italy, how people said how well behaved and how, how they behaved. The same thing happened with the children in France. People come up and commend our students on how they behave and their character. And then the other one, as our student president said, I think there was 130 pure applica, application, well, more than applications, but accepted.
180.
180 accepted, and how many applications?
250.
Right, 250. So the peer, which is an amazing group of students in the high school, really focused on giving back. So that's what this is all about, and that's how we show and we demonstrate character education that's been happening for the last couple of years. So I think it's extremely important that we send, send our staff there.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question. The 250, is that just from rising seniors?
Yes.
So, and so the senior class for next year, the rising seniors, how many are in that grade level?
170.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Yes, we, that I have, and you had 250 applications. How many would be anticipating graduating as a senior class for 2016? 700, 600?
700.
We're at 800? I don't know. I'm just thinking that 250 applications out of seven, okay, 250 applications out of one grade level has to be well over 25% of, of the class body that wanted to be in...
It's 33%.
33% that want to be part of that. So that, that's, to me, is a big number as well. Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. It was just...
That was the last...
And, no, there's just one piece that's been, I'm sorry, Ms. Mongan. There's one thing, because Ms. Ellis Foster said something. I just want to clarify it in case someone wasn't sure. Kind of let the cat out of the bag a little bit, but I think it's, it's good, because it's important now. So Parade Magazine does a, you know, every year they do a special about salaries and so, and so forth, and is the number-one red magazine in the country, Parade Magazine, and they've contacted us, and they're going to do a cover story featuring Olbridge High School and Olbridge Public Schools for their character education initiatives across New Jersey and the nation. So I think it's something we should all be proud of, and, you know, I wish the addition was big enough for every staff member and every community member, every parent to be in, because it's not possible without everyone in the community who made it possible. So thank you, everyone who was here.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Sulikowski. I certainly have, I spoke out last week at the agenda meeting also for 17 people to go. I know that last year, the trip was to Utah, and I don't know if some of the same principals that went to that trip are going to this, and then there was also a trip in May to Washington. And it definitely is an honor for the district, and it is a wonderful program. My concern is that a school district with 15 schools to have the two top administrators and almost half of the principals out of the district on one day, it's, to me, it's, it's, it seems a little excessive, and it's not a usual thing that happens. You have to have the county superintendent approve a trip where it costs more than $5,000, no matter how many people are going in a district. And I don't know if the county superintendent has approved this yet, but it's not a usual thing. And I also agree with Mrs. Adriani. I'd like to see a recognition in the district, not just to send people to Atlanta or to Washington or to Utah, or to someplace else in the state to recognize them, because it is a wonderful program. But I cannot support both top administrators going to every single one of these conferences, and I will be voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Anyone else?
I also agree with Mrs. Adriani and Kevin's point, and I will be voting yes on it.
And no sense in me repeating what some of the board members said, so I'm ready to vote. Okay, I need a roll call on number one. Mr. Mayor?
1 through 4. They're not so ready for voting.
Okay, why don't we do...
No, one we're going to just vote on?
2 through 7.
You want to go 2 through 7?
2 through 7.
Okay. Okay, we're going to be voting on 2 through 7. Mr. Mayor?
Borcelli?
This is on 2 through 7.
It's on 2 through 7, yes. DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Okay, motions 2 through 7 pass. Now on...
Okay, we're ready to vote on number one.
Borcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes, and thank you for making the amendments.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
No.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Borcelli?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Resolution number one passes.
And I want to thank the administration for working with the board on this one and scaling it back. I was going to say exactly what Ms. Adriani said, okay? Thank you.
Just, if I could add one more thing, Mr. Sulikowski, I'll be finished. So we do have a bit of a, a district ceremony in, in the works, working with the mayor's office, the township. We're looking to put signage at the entrance through all the major thoroughfares of the town, welcoming people to Olbridge as a national district of character. And when those signs are ready, we could have a little ceremony, and if many people want to come and stand in front of them, we will do that before we put them in the ground.
You're going to arrange all that?
Yeah.
Would that be for this school year or next school year? We don't have much time.
As soon as they're ready.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion to move athletics, one only.
Hopman will make a motion to move athletics.
Thank you, Ms. Hopman. I need a second. Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Oh, any discussion? No? Mr. Mayor?
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Borcelli?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to move finance, 1 through 21.
Adriani will move.
Thank you, Ms. Adriani. I need a second.
Hopman will say.
Thank you. Discussion. I see no hands. Mr. Mayor?
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Borcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Uh, resolutions 1 through 21 pass.
Okay, I need a motion to move non-certified personnel office 1 through 4.
Borcelli will move.
Thank you. I need a second.
Mongan will second.
Thank you. Discussion. No discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Borcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Resolution 1 through 4 pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Roman numeral number 21. Non-certified personnel operational. I need a motion to move 1 and 2.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. I need a second. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Discussion?
Mr. Sulikowski, I'd just like to say one thing regarding number 1. I brought it up at the agenda meeting last week. For anybody that doesn't know, the Energy Efficiency Coordinator, Mrs. Kim Castain, I believe we've saved approximately over $700,000 to the district in her findings in that position. So, thank you, Mrs. Castain.
And she didn't even ask for a raise. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on that? Nothing? Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Borcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Uh, resolutions 1 and 2 pass.
Okay, moving on. Non-certified personnel other, 1 through 17, I believe. Yes. I need a motion to move 1 through 17.
Adriani will move.
Thank you, Ms. Adriani.
Hopman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hopman. Discussion. I see no hands. Mr. Mayor?
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Borcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Uh, resolutions 1 through 17 pass.
Okay, number 23. Certified personnel, 1 through 48.
18.
Including the addendum. 1 through 47, including the addendum, which is 48. I need a motion to move it. I need a motion to move it.
And 18 is administratively removed. 18 was administratively removed.
And 18 is administrative correction.
Administrative removal.
Oh, I'm sorry, administratively removed. Okay, I need a motion to move one through 48.
Singh will move.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. I need a second.
Adriani.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Solakowski, it's not really discussion per se, but I have a question. Maybe Mr. Sedidino can answer. When we have multiple applicants for a position, which I'm sure there's always multiples, the people that aren't chosen, how are they notified that they weren't?
So, when you say they aren't chosen, they didn't get it through the screening process, so I applied, and I didn't even get an interview?
No, if you get the interview, it's down to, the pool is down to, I don't know, five people, let's say.
Right.
And obviously, one person gets that position. How are the other four notified that they did not?
Depending on how it's done, it's either done through a letter to the person, or if it's a personal interview, then a phone call to the person.
Mr. Sedidino, I couldn't hear your answer.
What's that? Oh. Oh. Either a letter to the person, which is sometimes a form letter, or a personal phone call, depending on the number of applicants and interviews.
Okay. Or an email.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Could you read item one?
Yes. Move the board approved the retirement of the following staff members with depreciation for their years of dedicated service to the district. Jill Dole, 27 years, this is Grinsum Elementary School, and Laura DeLuca, elementary librarian, 38 years, a total of 65 years, Mr. Weber. Congratulations, ladies. Okay, any other discussion on one through 48? I see no hands. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so we're voting on one through 17 and 19 through 48.
Right.
18 has been administratively removed.
Right.
Weber.
Yes.
Adriani.
Yes.
Borcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Okay, one through 17 and 19 through 48, pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, number 24. Non-certified personnel transportation.
Mongan will move.
One through three. Ms. Mongan, I need a second.
Single second.
I got two seconds. Which one did you write down first, Joe?
The comments.
Ms. Hopman. Any discussion? I see no hands. Mr. Mayor?
Adriani.
Yes.
Borcelli.
Yes.